Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 11th Board Selectmen Meeting. I'll read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input, 7:05 Harvest Group Inc., DBA Mia Pearl, Change of Manager. 7:20 The Kitchen Partners LLC Doing Businesses Union Straw Minor Modification to Existing Licenses. 7:35 Presentation by Town Manager Fire Chief Selection. 7:45 Selectmen's Update. 7:50 Town Managers' Update. 7:55 Assistant Town Managers' Update. And then we have several action items. So, Doc, you want to lead me in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
7 o'clock Citizens Input. Anybody here for Citizens Input? Janice?
Janet Kennedy, 55, Courthouse Street. These that I'm hearing is about the $50,000 that Senator Feeney and Jay Barrows acquired from the town of Foxborough. I did a timeline because I noticed it hasn't been on any of the agendas. The only time I heard about it was when I met the senior center when I asked you. It's really quick. I took copies for everybody to Amanda and she can pass it on to you. The chair of the board of selectmen was able to get Senator Feeney and Jeff Barrows to ask Governor Baker for this due to the fact that Foxborough has lost power. The generators were to be put into senior housing complexes, Colliane Court and Centennial, in their meeting places. That way the seniors in each complex could stay warm or cool depending on the weather situation. It's easier to get them to the meeting room, which is across the street, than having to bus them to the Taylor School. They want to stay close to home and at that age they want to make sure nobody's touching their stuff. It was the same with my mother. We couldn't get her out of her apartment or her house. In August, I went to the senior center and had coffee with Town Manager, which you do monthly, and asked about the generators. He said he needed a letter from Senator Feeney and Jay Barrows stating the state was going to reimburse them if they used town funds while they waited for the emergency funds to be distributed. I called the both and they sent us a letter assuring him the town would be reimbursed. That was late August. No one said anything in September. In October, I went to the Housing Authority meeting because they had not posted anything on the generator. So I went to the meeting and the director was annoyed that I asked about the generator and didn't want to talk about it. The chairperson said, yes, we're going to talk about it. The director was not pleased. Chairperson said they had a generator company come in and had given a price. It seems Centennial Court's meeting room box needs work. It's only the meeting room box, not the others. The director to meet didn't want them. I guess she thought anybody would come to the seniors' meeting room in each complex. I told her the town had a generator at the Taylor School and the others would go to the Taylor School. I then called her bosses in Boston. They never were told about the money for the generators. And then I went to coffee with the Town Manager in November and sent a letter to the management company for the federal side of Colliane Court, suggesting the management company East Point put one in in Colliane Court. I called the management company and I've called them today. The guy's still thinking about it. He has not made a decision. And then I called Senator Feeney's office and the way it was written, I guess, the Housing Authority or Town property. You know, why has this not been addressed and it needs to be explained? I mean, there's a lot of other towns like Attleboro, North Attleboro, Norfolk, and Wolf Cove. They'd be jumping for $50,000 to put generators in their senior complexes. And I understand the federal because I did call Senator Kennedy's office and if this was federal money, that could be ordered directly in. The only one who can order someone to do it is state money, this Governor Baker, I found out yesterday. But my whole thing is, you know, that's $50,000. It's been here for a while. I personally am having a generator put in because if I wait for my husband to do anything, I'm not going to have time. So I'm going to have him put in. It's true. Men don't think sometimes. And so I'm getting minds on equal amen. I know here's my notes, but I know you can't talk about it, but it needs to be put on the agenda and also, you know, if the management company isn't going to put it in, then I don't think. You can check with the legal legals and find out if you can legally put that in. And especially with Colliane Court. If this was any apartment complex that you pay rent and something isn't quite right, they have to fix it. So I don't know if the building inspectors ever say anything to the Housing Authority about that electric box that's only in the meeting room at Centennial Court. But if it needs to be fixed, it's an apartment complex and it doesn't matter if you write your own checkout or if you get federal state funds, but I think Colliane is only state. The other one is federal state. It's still required to fix it if it's not working correctly.
Thanks, Janice.
I'll give these copies to Amanda. I did my own notes. If you have a problem, you can call me. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for Citizens Input? Seeing none. 7:05 Harvest Group Inc., Doing Businesses as Mia Pearl, Change of Manager. Want to come up to the table and state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Paul Schneider. I'm an attorney from Canton and with me is Jeanne Maugh. She is the owner of the Mia Pearl Restaurant, which I hope you all have had a chance to visit at one time or another. Her daughter Sydney is with us in the back and we appreciate you taking us early because Sydney's got to go home and do homework. Jeanne's husband, Sydney's father, Ed Wu, unfortunately passed away at a very young age on Mother's Day, May 13th of this year. And everything in that restaurant, Mia Pearl, and everything in the other restaurant he owned in Canton, My Place, was in his name. So we're doing the estate right now and that'll be done by May 13th of 2019, at which time everything will be in Jeanne's name. But the executive director of the ABCC, Ralph Sacramone, suggested as a stopgap measure that at the very least we ought to get Jeanne as the manager of both restaurants. So she has been appointed the manager in Canton and we're here tonight to ask you to appoint her as the manager of Mia Pearl. She did take the TIPS course, as did her brother Jim, who helps her out, and the head bartender, Ed Fung. So they all have taken the TIPS course, which is good. So that's pretty much where we are at this moment. We'll be back to visit you in the spring when we're going to ask that all of the names be changed from Ed Wu to Jeanne's name. And I want to just finish by thanking Amanda and Pam. They were very, very helpful to us in a difficult time. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, just Ms. Ma. I frequent it often. It's a very well-run establishment and I'm sorry for your loss. He's a nice man.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, straightforward. Move to change the manager of record in the Harvest Group DBA Mia Pearl.
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Just under discussion to Jane May, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Manager of Jane May.
Yeah.
Okay. So motion made.
Jeanne Maugh.
Jeanne Maugh, sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll see you in the spring.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
All right. Anybody here yet from The Kitchen Partners? Yep? Just state your name.
Jim Glazer.
Jim, how are you?
Good, good.
And you are the...
I'm one of the investors partners.
Okay. So what do you want to do?
I guess we're here to get the plan restamped for 136 seats.
So we originally approved it for 90?
Correct. And then the engineers came in and restamped it for 136.
Okay. No other work to be done?
No, no.
Nothing changed?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Pretty straightforward it looks like, right? When are you opening?
I think very shortly.
Trying to draw that answer out as clever comes.
Yeah, no one's giving it to us.
Right, right. No, but shortly.
Yeah?
They're training staff right now, so.
Should have been, you should have stayed closer than we were two weeks ago.
Yeah, they're very close.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure you've got all the proper signups from the fire department and the building inspection department, right, for this increase?
I believe, I believe so.
Okay. That's important to have that because it'll be certified as if that's the case.
Yeah, I know the plan was submitted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we approve it pending those signatures then?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that that's, it has to have those signatures in order to be certified for that size.
Okay. Yep.
Anybody else on the board have any questions or...
I'd also been mentioning our staff and so I know that we've looked at it, they've had eyes on this, right? And there's been no pushback?
No, I don't, I don't, I think everyone's on board. So basically, so we can get a conditional approval tonight and then we just need to get the board, the building inspector and the fire department?
To confirm the size.
Right, and so I wouldn't have to come back again, no?
You won't have to go back.
Okay, that's, that's perfect.
All right. Move to approve the modification to The Kitchen Partners LLC Doing Businesses as the Union Straw, existing annual all alcohol common vic and seven-day entertainment license from 90 seats to 130 seats with the caveat that the...
136.
136 seats. That the fire chief and the building inspector sign off.
Perfect. Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up, a little bit ahead of schedule. Bill, Presentation, Town Manager, Fire Chief Selection.
So this is not going to be an extensive presentation, but I've previously advised the board that I have reached a conclusion as to who this person should be and I will say from the outset that, first of all, I want to congratulate current chief Hatfield for preparing two very, very highly qualified candidates for this position. As everyone knows, that we actually did an internal promotion this time. We did not go outside to seek a candidate to fill this role. For some time now, the current chief has been grooming and developing two very highly qualified candidates for the role of fire chief, which made it extremely difficult to select one of them to fall into that role. So what we did, instead of just making it, you know, based on just an interview, was that we had an outside for an assessment center, which we typically do in those situations we've done in all the other fire chief and police chief candidate situations or even deputy chief or that type of role. And as the role, as it rolled out, both candidates again did very well, but there was a difference. And then I actually met with both candidates individually right after that, on the following Monday, following the assessment that was conducted on Friday. I met with them on Monday, reviewed their credentials with them and also their plans for what their view of the department should be over the next several years. And came to a conclusion based on the results of the assessment center and the interview that deputy chief Mike Kelleher should be raised to the level of fire chief of this department. Mike is a resident of Foxborough, as is deputy chief Tom Buckley, who also is a resident of Foxborough. So it was good to make a decision for a hometown guy. Nice to be able to do that. And I will tell you that we were fortunate to have two very highly qualified guys. And I will tell you, both candidates did extremely well in the process. And I will tell you that the assessors who actually rated this process said both candidates were extremely well qualified and they said the writing portion of their assessment was the best that they'd ever seen. So I, it's the credentials, the congratulations go to both candidates. I, again, very difficult decision to make, but I will tell you that I think that it's a good decision. I think it's one that I think will benefit the community in the long term overall, but I, it's nice to be able to have a nice number two in place as well. So that's the recommendation I have and anybody have any further thoughts, I certainly will, certainly welcome that.
When would, when's Roger's last day and when will Mike start?
Roger is expected to leave on January 19th, if I'm not mistaken. That's the, it's the last part of the second half of the month. And, you know, I certainly will have to do a contract negotiation with Mike and bring that back to you for final approval, but I don't expect that to be a difficult process and I'm anxious to get started on that, but I certainly wanted to bring it to you first before I suppose I want any further.
Would there be, would Mike be, is he going to be like in this role once the contract's signed?
He would actually take over as of January 19th when the chief leaves. So it'd be, he'll still, the chief will stay on in that role. He's going to continue to work under the guise of the chief, work more directly with him on some of the roles and responsibilities that he typically...
Should be fairly seamless transition.
Yeah, it really should be. I mean, I can tell you that both candidates have worked closely with the chief over the past several years. They've prepared the budgets. They've worked on a lot of the, they've worked on a lot with public appearances. They've been involved in a lot of different events, training the department, working with the department, worked in collective bargaining roles. So they, they're very familiar with the operations and I, it's, we're fortunate to have that kind of a situation for this town.
Good. Anybody on the board have anything?
Just a logistical, so under the town manager former government, you have the responsibility for hiring and negotiating. We signed the contract.
Yes.
So today being middle of December, if he's starting in January, when would we expect to see a contract?
I would hope to have something for you first week in January, the first meeting in January.
Okay. And his starting date would be January what?
At least the 19th was when Roger is going to step down officially, so if I'm not mistaken, so I'll confirm that, but I believe that's the date.
Okay. Thank you.
Selectmen's update. I just want to thank the Foxborough High Swim team for the dinner they put on for the veterans last Friday. Mike, did you get to go to that?
I just get, if the recommendation's acceptable, can you just confirm that? Well, at least I can move forward.
Oh, all right. Did we, did we have to confirm that?
Well, usually you do. It's the process that I presented. And if there's, unless there's, if you take no action, it comes approved automatically, but if you, if you want, if you don't want to wait, you can certainly act on it now.
So as a motion? Move to approve Mike Kelleher as our next fire chief?
Pending contract negotiations.
Pending contract negotiations.
Second. Motion made. Second. Further discussion?
Just under discussion. This just seems a little different than what we've done in the past.
Well, only because of the timeline, I wanted to make sure that we, you wouldn't normally, you would just, it would normally just, I would announce it and unless there'd been any problems, you wouldn't, you would just follow.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but we are asking for a vote. We haven't seen a contract at all. So pending contract.
Yeah. It's, it's, all it would do is go to the next phase, which I would then bring the contract back via final approval.
I think we're authorizing Bill to enter contract negotiations.
Correct. That's it.
Okay. So I, having said that, if you could reword the, that's not what the motion was. So if the motion is to enter into contract negotiations, but I think the motion was to approve it pending a contract.
Pending a successful contract. So either or, I think it's...
Virtually the same language.
Okay.
Amended.
Yeah, amended.
So move to approve...
To authorize a town manager to go into contract negotiations with Mr. Kelleher.
What'd he say?
Second. Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So last Friday night, the Foxborough High Swim team put on a dinner for the veterans. It was last Friday afternoon. Mike, did you attend that or...
I did not. I was otherwise engaged, but I understand it was very successful. It was well-attended.
Good. That was the first time they've done it, so hopefully they'll do it again. So thanks to the swim team and VFW for providing the location.
I was, I was there two days later at the VFW hall and to brief them on other matters and they gave comments about they were very pleased that the youth in the, in the community reached out to the veterans in that way and that they were able to use the building to do that function. So it went a little very well.
Good, good. That's nice. That's good. And then the only other thing, I just wanted to thank Tom Freeman for getting the menorah up on the common. Looks good. Anybody else have anything? All right. Town manager update.
So just a couple things I wanted to bring to your attention. This week we received, we sent out a letter to CSX and Mass Coastal regarding the rail situation that we said we would do and basically put them on notice that we're not pleased with the, with the actions that they've taken and therefore hoping that they will cease and desist any further such activity that was, that's causing the disturbances in the neighborhood. So we are continuing to try and establish a meeting with, with CSX and Mass Coastal and we've also notified DOT as well, just as an interest at third party, but, and I think they will be, they'll try to dispense the discussions as well. So we just want to just let people know that that's gone out and that I've got a copy of that on that, so you're aware of that as well. And I'll also send a copy list to the neighbors, letting them know that this information's gone, maybe that will make them aware of it. The other thing is related to the, the situation relating to the, dealing with the reservoir, the faucet reservoir, that we did receive notification this week that Snyder Electric has noted, has requested an extension of time to respond to the comments that were made in the report. They asked for an extension to be to the end of January 30, to January 31st, 2019, if parents omit the ITC. They obviously wanted, they wanted to take those comments that have been made to them and to DEP and evaluate them and see if they can come up with some, some further answers. So just letting you know, keeping you in the, in the know on that situation. So they're going to be, and we see a formal notification, and that went to DEP asking for that formal extension. I'm not sure if they're going to, if they're going to grant it or not, but at least they've made the request. The other thing is that, I think several, maybe, I'm interested, you may be the only one maybe on the board at the time that was, maybe some of you were, dealing with the Hanover project where there was, there was a mitigation.
Mitigation funds.
Yeah, mitigation funds. So that, those funds are actually still out there because the, we're waiting for the project to reach 90, I think it was a 90% full capacity. Well, it's beyond that now. So we, we're in the so-called waiting period, but we've asked them if they would consider conducting the studies now because clearly there's 98% of the, of the place is occupied. So we think if they can start the studies, that can tell us what kind of improvements we can, we can look at. Roger Hill and Nick Ritchie have both looked at the situation and Roger's thinking that if it's possible, if we can get an early answer on that, if in fact, unless there's a significant change being requested to the intersection itself, that what he'd like to do is to actually utilize some of those funds to help repave that area, the, both the streets. But he's, obviously, we have to wait and see what those results come up with, but he's, he's given me a memo asking me for consideration of that. I said I would, I would at least alert the board of that situation.
For those of us that don't know anything about that, can you just review real quick what that is?
So there were funds set aside when the permit was granted for the 40B. The Hanover project is, was, that was one of the last 40Bs that was granted in the community. That was, the, part of that agreement was that there was a fund of about $300,000 that was set aside. $150,000 directly related to the project, another $150,000 could be used for community type expenses. Some of that money was spent on permitting, permitting software, which was actually requested as part of that. And so there's still money available for that. I think there's maybe a total of about $250,000 that's remaining out of all those other $300,000. So I'll confirm that number, but just want to let you know that those funds are still available to be spent, but we want to make, we want to understand what the impact is, what the greatest impact is. And I think it was, I believe it was the will of this board to try and spend the money as much as possible in that neighborhood. And so we can, so I'm here to tell you that we're at that point and we're coming up on that point. So I want to just make you aware of that and that, and once we have some of the impact, study of the impact, the traffic impacts, we'll bring it back to you and then see what you want to do from there.
I think, I think the one piece that, small piece that's missing is there was a strong neighborhood opposition group or a community involvement group. And rather than doing a study and saying, well, we think the impact is lighting or traffic or noise, we were going to reach out to the neighborhood and say, now that it's 90% occupied, what do you see? And I know a house went up across the street, it was, you know, and that's the area they were talking about landscaping, things like that. So rather than just relying on the municipal side in the study, if we could reach out to that group, and it, there was a few organizers maybe, but just say, what have you seen? Traffic, lighting, noise, policing, things like that.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense. They're the ones that live it every day, so what could, what kind of improvements could we do?
We'll try and identify who, some of those folks, go back in the records and find out.
But I think it was, I think it was stated at a meeting that we would do that, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. So we want to, it wasn't a huge group. It was, it was probably maybe a dozen or so people at the most.
It started large, then it came down and then there was some discourse and it ended up with just a few, very vocal, but I know the neighbors that...
Right.
...did show up were directly abutting Fisher in the other side, so just give them the opportunity to...
All right. We'll, we'll make that point to try and reach out and find out who they are. Okay. And then the other thing is, I don't know if you had a chance to see this, but this is the, the new newsletter that has been put out by the, by the, by the North, by the Council on Aging and Human Services Council. It's, it's about nine to 10 pages long and it's very comprehensively done, completely paid for by donations, so it was, so it was really well put together. It's really, tells a great story about the, about the seniors. It tells a lot about the things that they're offering now and different programs. It's really, really well put together. So if you get a chance to look it over, please do. It's a, I think it's a, it's a nice, a nice start to that new approach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's initiated by Mark?
Yeah, initiated by Mark, yeah.
So this is just Foxborough or all of, just Foxborough?
Beautiful. Remember when we interviewed him, when we interviewed him, he was talking about this. Didn't take him long to...
Took him long.
Put out an extremely check now. That's great.
You've had a chance to get over there too. They've actually changed the whole look. If you go into the senior center, they've actually sort of freshened up the paint and the furniture and it's actually done a nice job.
Wow, that's impressive.
Well done. All right. And so that's, that does it for my updates at this point, so thank you.
Mike, did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, as Mark was meeting with us this morning, Mark Craig, he was saying that he had 2,500 copies of this newsletter made at no, with no use of tax money. And they're planning on doing this as a monthly newsletter and these are distributed around all the municipal buildings in town. So he's off and running.
It'll be, it'll go via email as well.
Yeah, it's electronically done as well. So just one other thing I just wanted to mention this morning that we were, that Foxborough has been, has been selected as, as one of the, as the highlighted communities in the annual report for the Maya program this year. So they were here taking our pictures this morning, the whole committee, the safety committee. And this morning we recognized Barbara Kelly, or Babs, as she's so affectionately known around here, as really a sort of a true leader of that program. And so we gave her a little recognition this morning. It was, she was really, really appreciative of that. So congratulations to her and congratulations to the safety team for being recognized for that achievement, so. All positive.
All right. Assistant Town Manager update.
I just have a few things. Today was a good day for all of us. I just have a few things, today was a good day for all of us, we, we had three collective bargaining situations, we had an arbitration this morning that we settled without, it was pretty easily settled without being long drawn out costly thing with the steelworkers. We came to a tentative agreement with the library union today, they're going to bring it back to their membership, and we also came to a tentative agreement with police, so it was.
One piece that's still hanging out?
Yeah, there's one questionable piece, but I think we're a pretty good meeting of minds, very small number of issues, it's, I think it's looking pretty good, so hopefully at some point in January, after they, their groups ratify, we can bring you more details on those deals, so, that's all I have.
Thank you guys.
Two positions that we're looking to fill, the assistant assessor position has closed, we'll be moving into the next, second round of interviews on that Monday, the seventeenth, and then the treasurer collector position is still open, we'll be closing that position on the fourteenth, and then to follow up with, with interviews for that, we've had a good response on, on all of our recruitments. And then the last thing I have is that, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, you know, Tom Freeman brought forward the idea about lighting the menorah on the, on the common, he did a wonderful job constructing it, you can see it as you come around the north end of the common, and the town manager was invited to, for ceremony there this past Sunday, he had a conflict, so I went and represented him and the board, and met with Tom, the rabbi, and a group that filled the community room at the library with just some, some great events, they shared a little bit of their culture and religion with me, things I didn't know, things about the dreidel, things about some of the, you know, thing, in fact, here's Tom now, and if anyone's familiar with the dreidel, it looks like a wooden top, and you spin, you spin it, and, well, they had a dreidel that was about three foot by three foot and three foot high, where they would actually put a kid inside, spin this thing, and the kids had a ball, and.
Sounds fun.
And so they did that leading up to the lighting of the menorah on Sunday, so hats off to Tom, to the rabbi, and the whole group that were there, it was Foxborough and all the folks that came as well from out of town, did a great job on that, that's all I have.
Good job, Tom.
Nice job.
All right, action items.
All righty, move to approve the 2019 licenses.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, do we have stamps yet?
It was an extraordinary job done by Pam and everything, did you help out at all on this too?
That's all Pam.
It's all on Pam, I think, I think she did a terrific job.
Yeah, so under discussion, there is a stamp in place, so no writer's cramp this year.
No way. Awesome.
Guys get to avoid that this year for a change.
So motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve Gria LLC doing business as the Common's Eatery Common Victuals License.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? None, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to reappoint the agricultural commission members with terms expiring twelve fourteen twenty-one.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation to the Council on Aging of two hundred and forty dollars from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors for half of September and October Tai Chi.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation of thirty-five dollars to the Council on Aging and Human Services from anonymous for the lockbox safety program.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents to the Foxborough Historic Commission for multiple donors through the book sales for the general, for the General Historic Fund.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of four hundred and fifteen dollars from Fred Lockhart, Foxborough Fonder's Day Planning Committee, Catherine Scott, Annie's Bookstop Association, David Clinton, South Shore Model Railway Club and Museum, Lydia Main, Virginia Coppola, Fred Green, Ann Conady, to the Boyd and Library General Gift Fund in memory of Marilyn Cutler.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve Whole House Group LLC doing business as Battle Road Brewing Company, request to amend a one day entertainment license on twelve fifteen eighteen to include a guitarist.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve extended closing hours for the CBS Sporting Club on New Year's Eve to two AM on one one twenty nineteen.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Pending the normal stoppage of liquor sales.
Okay, so motion made, seconded, providing they stick to the liquor rules, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve extending closing hours for the CBS Sporting Club on twelve twenty-nine eighteen, one twenty-six nineteen, two nine nineteen, and three two nineteen to two AM.
Second?
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, just out of curiosity from my point, why those specific dates?
Reading in the, the letter, it's, there's sporting events going on, so I'm thinking it's pay-per-view boxing or something?
It's just restaurant only, it's not.
Yeah, it's no alcohol, but it says for sporting events, so it's got to be, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be playoffs, February ninth and March second, it's got to be pay-per-view boxing?
Could be, could be boxing, yeah.
Okay.
Is this, I don't want to, I mean, New Year's Eve, all that, I mean, we typically will extend, are we, are we legal to do this on multiple days for stuff like that, or are we going to open up a can of worms?
Well, it's interesting, because you're not, you're not looking to, to extend it for the alcohol service, I want to look at for the restaurant service.
Yeah.
So that is interesting.
Yeah, see, I double-checked the letters, none of them said why, per se.
It just says additional time open as a restaurant serving only food would not include any alcohol beverages, I thought I saw, oh, it would allow us to show important sports events to our guests without removing them before the event comes to its conclusion.
Must be boxing.
That's what has to be a pay-per-view.
Or MMA.
Probably. I just don't know if, I mean, are we opening ourselves a can of worms here with other establishments wanting to add this, do this, is it within our bylaws to allow multiple other times other than, you know, the one-off Christmas Eve type thing?
Like I said, the, the extension of liquor service is one thing, but the extension of food service is a different thing.
But under a common victual license.
Alcohol is regulated by the ABCC, but the.
Right, but under common victual license, under our town bylaws, I mean, could you open a twenty-four hour diner, I mean, can you serve food in Foxborough twenty-four hours, I mean, I just don't want to, I don't want to do something here, and it looks like we have a little bit of time to maybe look into it, we're meeting next week.
All right, I was going to remind you, everybody, we are going to meet next week, so it's, it's only one week.
Yeah.
Because there's no, there's no meeting next week, the following week is Christmas.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually, I have no issue with it, but I think we just need a few more answers.
Okay, I can check in, Chris, I'd like, I'd be curious to know what, what the events are.
And that, I was going to add to Chris, you know, other than the, well, no, I'd have to say all four of them, I'd be curious, because it's not December thirty, December thirty-first, it's the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, and there's no football game that goes after one AM either, so it's definitely going to be.
It's interesting, they're not even asking for extension on New Year's Eve.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
Well, the one before.
Yeah.
Twelve twenty-nine?
Yeah, or eight oh nine, the one we just approved.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, okay, that's right.
So yeah, I mean, I don't see any harm in waiting a week to approve this.
It's not going to hurt them.
No, so, and I don't think collectively, well, I shouldn't speak collectively, I mean, I don't have an issue conceptually with it, but I just wouldn't mind a little.
We'll confirm it, you know, and with us coming back next week.
So we made a motion, we seconded it, we discussed it, and.
Just table.
Move to table.
Table till next week.
All right, do we have to vote on tableing it till next week, or?
Just withdraw the motion, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, I'll withdraw.
Okay.
Second?
All right, motion made to withdraw, seconded, all those in favor withdrawing?
Aye.
Thanks, yeah, if you could just get clarification.
Certainly will.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor? And everybody?
I was going to say happy holidays, you get one more.